I didn't find my glasses.
What?
Are they on your head?
No, I rolled my head up. I did that all the time.
I do a sacred sunblock.
I do too, I do too.
Right, straight.
Now, big dog, I'm losing them. There they are.
That's only, that's only change.
Could you sit?
I don't think it's when you sit.
I went around the outside edge and you find them all. Well, sir, blood doesn't have masks, gonna need to, we'd have one on, ready.
Let me kiss now.
We'll go there. Are you working with him, David?
Sir?
We'll get service.
So, I...
Oh, wait, so, Doc, ain't you thinking?
No. I got her financials.
I take care of monuments. You gotta take notice of monuments.
I got everything yet.
How does, how does this gonna work out, we're in town?
Young County Commission for Superior of the Orders. Setting an regular meeting Monday, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. It is nine thirty a.m. I might note that this meeting has been posted in the manner for the time required, that all members of the court are present. And if it's convenient, please stand for invitation.
Flash break. Father, we just ask you to be with us today. Guide and direct us as we place issues where we can. Father, we just ask you to, uh, watch over this nation, try to heal this nation from the vision and try to heal this nation from our virus. Father, we just ask you to, uh, put your hands on those that are sick and ill and comfort those that lost loved ones the last couple of weeks. Father, we just ask you to forgive us where we've failed you and do other work to ruin our lives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Item number three, I put this in order to wish our permission. Science, happy birthday.
Oh, thank you, sir. I'm hoping everyone would forget this particular one.
It is once again, it is once again a year over tonight.
There you go. But you're, you'll soon catch me, sir. Like, over, is that right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, another item that I want to talk a little bit about, I guess you could say, um, is, uh, the event Friday the twelfth, uh, that would be, uh, with the rest. Whenever we have the, um, possibility of demonstration here that is permitted and uninvited, that we got some, we got information that had a little bit of credibility about it, that we were gonna be visiting, uh, um, to, uh, I only express my gratitude to Young County Law Enforcement and the police activity there for their assertiveness on the circumstance and, uh, I was quite comforted to see the, uh, response of our local citizens in regard to their public property and, and their, uh, expression of how they felt about their public property and their defense of it. I was quite comforted in that and I want to congratulate all of them that gathered here in, uh, in the defense of our monuments and memorials that are on this courthouse. And next, I'll give you a little update on, on state activities as far as COVID-nineteens. At my last look, there's been one thousand seven hundred fifty, one million seven hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven tests over the state. There's been one hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and one positives of those tests. There's been two thousand one hundred and eighty-two fatalities. And currently, there are forty thousand nine hundred and twenty active cases, you know? I think over our state, uh, over our state number, that's probably up fifteen or twenty percent from what it was before we had the reopening, before we had the high school graduations, before we had memorial holidays, memorial day holidays and everybody getting out after being pinned up for a couple of months. So, that was to be expected. Also, we've got Greg Coker here, he could give us our local numbers. He grabs our MNC, he gets the reports. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
All right, Young County tested, we have one thousand one hundred seventy-six negative, one thousand one hundred twenty-five positive. We have twenty-nine and then pending twenty-two. That's as of this morning, twenty-two June. The numbers that I look at are, we, we've had a giant increase, thousand percent, in less than thirty days of this calendar. Um, six-eight, there were seventeen, June fifteenth, twenty-three, today they're twenty-nine. Got an increase of twenty-two from twenty-two May to today. Why is that? People aren't doing what you're supposed to do. If you see something, say something, all right? Let's keep our focus safe.
Greg, how many, how many cases do we have on the books? Eight, nine?
There's nine right now. Yes.
So, any numbers that come back as false positives?
Several. We have had, those have only come from the assisted living facility.
One?
Twelve. And, and that's the Texas National Guard Mobile Training Team. And they're coming back. And I ask that if we could not have them come back because their, their lack of, and I'm not gonna say, yes.
Lack of medical professionals.
Lack of professionalism and, and lack of not doing the right thing.
They scared those folks.
The protocol, they, they weren't wearing gloves, they weren't wearing a mask, they weren't sterilizing after they tested, so...
They weren't talking to the people there?
No. And they didn't contact anybody in this county if they were coming. So, that kind of blindsides all of us. I told them that when they come next, I'm gonna be there to institute protocol. If they don't do it, I'm gonna ask them to leave.
Yeah, that's what's been, uh, right now.
Zero that I've known of.
How many else have been, uh, they're hospitalized, hospitalized?
I can't recall right now.
Supposed to be zero, but I can't see.
I, I think there's none. There was one potential. It was, they went back and forth to the metro and they were hospitalized in the metro. It's, we have plenty of beds. I pray we don't have to use them. Yeah, just be vigilant, especially with Fourth of July coming up. It's our independence day, it's a current situation in this country, we couldn't see anything happen.
Thanks, Greg. One other little, uh, item, I guess I should mention that courthouse, most of the courthouse is gonna be closed. I think that we'll leave our doors, maybe open, there'll be a few offices that may do some service, but, um, we've had the possibility of a, an employee being exposed to that and it's currently being tested, so we're waiting on the results of that. Uh, so, that's the, um, that's, that's the issue that we have on right now with some of the offices being closed. Is there anything else on item three that any of you wish to discuss or bring up? Okay. Good mark, we'll move to item number four. Consider County Clerk's Management, the previous meeting, GBA, twenty-twenty. A little feedback on that during the end part of the week, if anybody wishes to. Got a question, Davey?
Reason I brought that up, I had recalled Kristen and Jimmy didn't table that. Since your numbers and Judge's numbers are different, might be best if we tabled it. But I think if them never picked up the chair, it just turned into no action.
Yeah, I mean, I put no action, um, it's going until next meeting, I'll let it be okay.
You're really about to review all the, uh, any motion, second amendment, make my plan on that.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, Commissioner Wiley, second motion, Judge Sappes. Two approvals, and it says, we need all the papers, uh, we need a vote.
She, she does have her, um, May twenty-twenty financials balanced, uh, everything balanced and everything's good on it, so, get y'all to sign it and then I'll get y'all copied what you normally get.
It's two.
I'll second it.
Motion, Commissioner Wiley, second motion, Judge Rogers. To approve the financial order presented on paper, uh, so. And now, Mr. Attorney, Attorney, Mr. Attorney.
I have vouchers. It's a total of one hundred sixty thousand, seven fifty-seven sixty. And out of the general is ninety-four thousand, four oh three seventy-eight. And there is non-sbutane included.
Still live on vouchers?
I'll second it.
Motion, Commissioner Cruz, second, uh, Judge Sappes. To approve the, uh, paper presented on paper. I have four of one. Item number seven. Discussing, consider employee Barnes, dying of governor, victim of tax evasion, five thousand dollars. She on the plane, Ann, secretary of state, gets a, gets an office, five thousand dollars. And Laura, Justice, please, three, five thousand dollars.
Two.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Wiley, second, uh, Judge Sappes.
Presenting.
Yes. On paper, with the bonds, whiskey.
I have.
Item number five. Discussing, consider road crossings, permit by the county special people of the district, North Road, probably been, uh, through.
Yeah, they're gonna install a water meter, a water caddy over there and get the water across the road. Like, Zach's field get cut, but it's pretty narrow road and so far, it's, it might be most to approve the, our, uh, big way. I'll second that.
Motion, Commissioner Rogers, second, uh, Judge Rogers. To approve, uh, road crossing on North Road, later killed, uh, in paper.
I have.
And we have discussed, consider, item number nine, discussing, consider road crossing permit for Rizes Caliphon, Character Road, Tiger Road, that big version four, I think. Two.
I'll second that.
Wiley, two seconds, five. Motion, uh, Mr. Wiley, second, uh, Judge Sappes, to approve the road crossings precinct number four on Character Road, Tiger Road, for Rizes Caliphon, on paper.
I have.
Item number ten, is discuss, consider budget calendar for, uh, twenty-one. Now, this, this calendar has got some dates, uh, that have been modified to what it was. It's got our, uh, budget auction meeting coming on twenty-fourth of August, I believe. That would be the last date. That would be the last date that was available for, to give the proper timeframe, notices, of course. I guess you'd say accepted matters, both with the taxation and what have you. And now that's ten, the tax calculation, I didn't change that any because I don't have that, I've contacted, been in contact with three times, we don't have a select by date to do that just yet. The code says, it speaks once about, um, August the first, uh, no, yes, about August the first and about August the seventh. Both of those say, um, by or, uh, or assume they're after that.
Yeah, these, these people to him are, they're a number about twenty-fifth, you know?
Twenty-fifth, and that, and that, and that too is a party date. It's, it's twenty-fifth or assume they're after practical, practical, the tax accessory, the chief of directors to have our certain type of due. That's possi, it's possibility, that could happen earlier than that, but normally it's, uh, at the end of the day on, on, on fifth. But I don't know what their certain chances are right now. I know they're having, uh, they're having some, the ARB met last week, I think. I don't know if they heard any protests last week, but they met at least once last week. I've had a contact, Luke, I'm, uh, with thirty of them, too. We don't have that yet.
We've got a time, time frame two, we both have, as soon as he gets his stuff put on the website for us, we only have so many days for us also, but. When he emails out the, uh, actually.
Yep.
With all that stuff, maybe about, what, seven days? And then?
Once all of those are calculated, those rates, we'll post those, we'll get them up on our website and in the newspaper, uh, the S A P. Now, um, on setting the tax rates, you asked me about that?
Yes, we have.
They don't have to have them at the public hearing. Normally they do, we're going in the first budget, budget adoption, has to be first. Nobody went in, it's got to opt the budget. And then, uh, we can set the tax rates at that hearing.
Yes.
After the budget adoption, but not later than seven days, they're right.
That's right. And that's after the deep COVID stuff, there is delay.
Yeah. Well, instead of two hearings, we're, uh, we're not required to have two hearings this time. Part has one. The twenty-fourth is, is the month date that we do that, that's the seventy-first day before the election. And that's, so if that goes over the, uh, over approval rate, it's gotta be on the ballot. If it's on the minimum, then it can be on the ballot, about a tick.
Didn't they change up the wording and everything and double the paper inside them?
Oh, they've got, there's ten different notices. It goes along with each application of whether you're at the, uh, no new tax rate or whether you're above the no new tax rate or whether you're at the, uh, over approval rate or if you're below the over approval, oh, oh, below the, uh, no new revenue rate or, I mean, there are ten, nine or ten different tax notices. I've got them all printed out in there. And it depends on how you, example, the tax rates, yeah, what notice you're gonna put in, put out.
Aaron Hughes' will, which one's the last?
And Debbie Cleaver was here for the auditor training a week ago and she sent me her presentation and complimented, I'll email it.
Oh, would I see it? What's her answer to all this?
Right now, yes, who knows, you know, it's just, um...
Unless they, they haven't got the paper yet.
The form, I mean, I mean.
They don't have the form ready?
No. But I do know that the number we used to multiply by is different than it was.
Yes.
That tells me they don't want it.
Yes, it changes. And this is gonna change till the twenty-twenty-three, so far.
I'll send it to you, if we have to.
So, it was confusing to begin with, they did their one thing.
That's bad.
You're right.
So, it's, uh, we're at the, um, our maximum is three, three point five percent. Or the de minimis rate, if it goes over the three point five percent, then that, there's an election flyer. That's got to get on the ballot, just such a, like, today, if you're there. And then the other is the de minimis rate and...
You don't have to have election, you can petition.
That can be, that can be also on that election by petition. Kinda like our, the old eight percent rate. With the declaration in order from state to Texas, well, we've got a national declaration, we got state declaration, and we've got local declaration. But the Sapper about the COVID-nineteen issue. So, there, a little bit later on here, there's an item, item on that that, um, I'll put the board of the court here on, inside of number twelve. That we'll discuss here when we get to it, but it's, uh, it can be, under the circumstances, we can maintain eight, eight percent, right? We'll be through that. What do you say about the county?
Two.
Second.
We're gonna meet next week? I think so.
Okay.
And, uh, motion, Commissioner Wiley, second, Commissioner Pruitt, to approve the, you know, budget calendar as presented on paper.
I have.
Here, item, um, okay, item number ten, um, discuss, considering, anything we need to do, farm restrictions, if any, that we've got pretty good rain last week. I have, I have, I am hard, anybody like that?
Miss Yeh?
Ethan Hatt.
Thank you, Lord.
And one, one, six, five, done. Just more coming than I had in mind.
Yeah, I mean, all week, pretty much.
Chances, chances. We just, we just very much this one.
Oh, I know, it was a good one, too, last night. Caught the wind.
They're, uh, playing well received, I think everybody, you know, with that, pretty good ride.
Everybody had your hydration right.
I still got the practice, so, didn't build up enough, but it's worth it.
We're off. I don't think we're doing like with the deadline for fireworks issue, would, would, I think, I believe, June. Ask that. No action, no action. Item number twelve. Discussing, consider directing that the voter approval tax rate be calculated at eight percent in the manner provided for a special taxing unit. This, um, item was actually presented, um, in, uh, by Jim Allison, he suggested that as, uh, agenda item, if we wish to do that. It's got a little order to go along with it. I don't tie up the discussion. I like, Mr. Wiley, he asked about that last week.
I'm not saying that we'll have to use that, which, I don't have to use it, but like it says on the bottom down there, the adoption disorder does require the Commissar's Court to finally adopt any, any increase in taxes, however, if you have a situation arise during the budgeting session, we don't proceed, we have some place and order there that we do without any exception, but having is not needed to be had.
This is, this is under, under the emergency disaster provision issued by our governor, actually, whenever he is issued, a portion of Texas or all of Texas, it could come under an order, so the county judge approved by the Commissar's Court for stealing, and then all three of those things has happened, including the national, or government, national order over the United States, a state declaration of disaster over the whole state, unloved declaration of disaster for young counties to say, under those provisions, if we can utilize the special district rate, say that I percent, I wouldn't have, if we do that, I don't think necessary, but I guess not, but of course, we should do.
So should we have an unforeseen deficit or an unforeseen expense, we would be able to go up to eight percent if necessary?
Yes.
Not wanting to do so?
Yeah.
If in our to do it, it's why we're doing that, which is supposed to happen.
Like we've always set that maximum rate, just below the maximum rate. I understand that the public doesn't understand why we do that, and go back to the lower rate, but it seems to scare people to do that, I'm afraid this might do the same thing, a little bit of understanding about it, but I understand why we need to do that, it's a fair sake. I, I would move we approve the court's then order to use the eight percent rate if necessary.
Okay, is there any more discussion there, or second, is our second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? I myself don't really care, care to do that, although it's provisions that added to that, I think so, for that, for, and Janet Beller, Patrick, probably didn't foresee the COVID nineteen, that's an issue that's been thought to be every company, that, so in their efforts to strip local authorities from building, building closer to the people, that counts up for putting, I guess you'd say a little bit.
Yep, cut out the box.
You know, I think that's what the deal was, if you leave places up along, then averages itself out.
Doesn't need to take what we need to do. Unless it comes to have you, I would, I would oppose, oppose anything like that, but I, I didn't see a reason to take that again with the law, so we're proposing here, is it all in favor? This, I agree, this order, where else, Governor Rabbit has declared a disaster in the entire state of Texas, including Young County, and where else, section twenty six, one oh four, C one, tax code, Texas tax code, provides that a tax entity located in an area declared a disaster area by the governor may direct that voter approval tax rate be calculated in the manner provided for a special taxing unit, and since that special taxing units aren't under the three point five rule, Young County Commissions Court hereby orders that the voter approval tax rate be calculated in the manner provisioned for a special taxing unit at eight percent as provided by the statute, revenue of five, a vote of five highs and zero nades, twenty second day of June, two thousand and twenty. Also, unless the adoption of this order does not require the Commissar's Court to finally adopt any increase in the tax rate, however, does preserve the option to consider an increase up to eight percent without a man in order of that. Wiley, in the five oh book. We're going to skip over item number thirteen, that will be held until somewhere around one o'clock. We've got an issue that the court takes to be aware of, we'll have a second, it's session at that time. Item number fourteen is resumed, I'm fifteen, let's get down to fifteen, it is, we'll go all the way down to sixteen, although the, like, my first thing. How, fifteen, we've got certain resolutions, these resolutions were, the gentleman, didn't got any over, this would be last week, suggested we do some of these things, they got these resolutions on there, I didn't want to report to, be aware of those, and ask any members of the court, by, or anything like that, on a different case. One of the resolutions, Stevens County, hundred and ten, they're not going to assess any, any efforts to trace citizens. I think it says there'll be a further resolved Stevens County Commissions Court, other county judge, in his role, emergency manager, director, to cooperate with the state of Texas efforts through M T X Group Incorporated, a newly organized foreign company, to trace local citizens with COVID nineteen, rather Stevens County will continue to provide tracing locally to point off these patients, I think it, emphasis on the end, the end of this third, is, on the foreign group, tracing our citizens. The other resolution that they have is, now therefore be resolved, Commission Court, Stevens County by authority granted, due by law to state Texas and people of Stevens County, Texas, we hereby pledge that the Stevens County Court, based on profit, that intent on profit, the fiscal year twenty twenty will not interest in our revenue profit taxes for twenty twenty one, fiscal duty, no limits, no tax trip, rate tricks, this pledge is to the citizens of Stevens County, that is that taxpayer will not see the county increase in revenue period, further we will undercut county's spending by reducing the county's workforce, lowering, lowering elected officials' salaries, employing lame operating strategies in county life, furthermore, services will be reduced because of the projected income shortage, the cost of studying efforts, the Commission's Court will tirelessly, will work tirelessly to minimize the reduction of services goods and citizens, whether we ask for assistance, understanding as we endure the challenging times together.
Nice question on that one, the taxes can be raised without the commission raising the taxes. The taxes can be raised without the commission is raising the taxes.
Yeah.
And then you, you can't, if the values go up.
Values go over your rate. Yes, the values go up, the voter approval rate, or the open tax revenue rate will go down. I mean, that's, people all vote over, so. I'm going to list that there for your consideration.
Oh, that not only the Bureau of the Local Money State is going to try to spend for us. For our local expenditures.
Promise you something, you don't know to back up.
You can probably just give away your salary, you can cut employee. Which is, looks like that's what they've done.
That's exactly what they've done.
Well, our, 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 our,[1341.51]
Okay, so, uh, here to date on the sales tax, it's seven hundred sixty-six thousand seven nine two is what she's received.
That's pretty good.
Looks like a month to date in May, now this is just through May.
Just through May, it's under twenty-five.
Yeah, we received hundred and twenty-three, one thirty-seven in May, so, um, so to get what we had budgeted, we got three hundred ninety-three thousand.
We're poor, might break it up a little bit from previous. We got another quarter, previous year. So.
Do you get two, two, two of them a quarter or?
I think so, yeah, 'cause I usually see that.
I suspect it's next, uh, next, next, probably before.
Yeah, and I could pull that June one and send it.
I'll probably, I'll please.
Yeah, probably, probably now.
Okay. I was discussing a question anyway, so let me ask you.
Well, I admire their courage and their intent.
Excuse me?
I admire their courage and their intent.
Out of number sixteen, the budget workshop, any matter of playing with the budget?
I do have the, it's been things that we, I know, I didn't wanna give them either. I, I was supposed to receive all of these requests, and I haven't even looked to who I, whose I have and whose I don't.
Give me that.
Give that.
Well, let's start from the top. I think, do you, do you have all, all the pieces?
I haven't even looked at them, they had to four o'clock Friday, and I didn't look to see whose I have, so I have not made copies of any of them yet, of the request.
I think that our quest to be on the Friday, four p.m.
Right.
I think I turned, turned around on Thursday.
So I haven't even looked in the box, I know they collected them for me while I was out last week, and then, uh, I haven't even looked to see whose I don't have, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll make my own, the budget off, both, but.
Same budget.
About the end of July, or the end of July, maybe, and maybe I'll be able to do this now. I think it's taken in the, uh, total of gold that, uh, few, few of five, since I have. Hooked up, held on, after.
Cheryl?
Yeah.
Let's talk CTF. How we budget that, doing budget that money in, and have a transfer line on the revenue side?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna the seat carts and put it in road bridge and do everything out there, and then.
So it doesn't need to show up in the budget at all, we don't need to add it to our, so it'd be money we're spending.
Well, I think what he said to do, can we get a line for revenue on that?
Yeah. Because if we put that extra expense in our road materials, what have you, will there be a line somewhere else?
So is that gonna come in there, were you gonna get any this year, or is that only gonna be in twenty?
I think we'll get some before, in twenty twenty-one.
As soon as they get their things lined up, we're supposed to be working stuff. We've already been okay, so.
This money is true we budgeted.
I think so. And then transfer somewhere, revenue line.
Consider it a zero now, but not with.
Yeah, we'll give the, have a budget number.
Yeah, it broke the budget, but it'll also grow the revenue, so.
Right, right.
Everybody goes in.
As long as you put that on there and pick it up, and it'll wash.
But the lady that does those books, what was that?
Yeah, so you know what, we did the, we did everything in the seat cart, just out of the road and bridge, and then, at the end, what was out here or there was paid either back to you from the road and bridge from those funds if we got.
Right, well, I figured those.
So I don't know, I don't know how you.
My five thousand dollar budget ended up being eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, you know, we have, uh.
It looks like they're terribly overspending those budgets.
We have, yeah.
He didn't know what to do.
We have seat cart's lining in there, I could change the title.
What?
Uh, in the road and bridge, on page thirty, if you look down, it's, uh, the expense line, it's oh two oh six, two oh three, three seven. We called it seat cart's miniatures, which we changed that, we already have the line, so just change it to, and then up in the revenue, see, I had the seat cart's grant, and then the matching funds paid out, so.
So we'll, you got grand four, ninety-five, will we see till since seat cart?
Yeah, yeah, if, if that's, I mean, that, I mean, I think that worked fairly well, and, I mean, how long's this gonna drag out? Three years. You're a nightmare. You're an accounting nightmare.
I mean, well, here we're talking about tax rates, they have no idea what tells about tax rates, why would you expect anything better about CTF? It is, it is an accounting nightmare.
It is, thank you.
Because if you.
But you do it wonderfully.
If you put all the expected expenditures in this year's budget, and you don't expend them this year, you carry them over into next year.
Right.
And the revenues are in previous year.
Are y'all supposed?
And the revenue probably will come for eighteen months after we get through.
What's y'all's match on that, is it twenty?
Twenty, yeah. We don't know exactly, we know what they have allocated us, but we don't know how much extra we're gonna get because the other county's not applying.
So you know, on the, um, on the revenue expense side, if you does that, and then the twenty percent is just something you need to budget for, I guess.
The twenty percent?
But go ahead, put the other in there, but you'll have to watch with the revenue, what you budget on the revenue.
Twenty percent will be.
But the twenty percent is.
So we're gonna have to figure twenty percent more than what we're gonna do, so we can cover that.
What line do you shoot, Rudy?
Well, I think you do the expense, the, the tip expense line.
But Gerald, you're later.
Well, we, the way I understand it, anything you do in kind, put that twenty percent, when you put Culver's in, things of that nature, it goes forward by twenty percent.
Okay, so we budget in Culver's and over Gerald?
That's what I do.
Hours of overtime and part-time?
So y'all just have to keep up with what is ten and what, yeah, it's, it's crazy.
Put it on the same form that I sent you last time, and it works easy.
Sound like me.
It might be, it might be worse than me. It's not bad. If you got specific roads, then you just gotta keep up with specific, have that road with that many hours, and the material.
If you've got the doors and, and who the vendor was, and the tickets, we need to watch out for, and that would help.
The real problem is making sure that you don't overcharge for hours in a day, or you charge enough hours in a day.
Right, and that's the hardest part.
You guys got three hours on the motorbender, and six hours on the dump truck, and four more hours on the packer, and all of a sudden, he's working thirteen hours a day, and he only has ten.
He got overtime.
But in kind, is the hardest part to keep up with.
But what we're gonna do is, is just put our name of the road we're working on on the rock field, that way that's.
Yeah, and that's, that's what's coming back though, and.
Yeah, and then on the, the tickets, I'll use, I put seat cart on my old ones.
Yeah.
But how long did it take you to haul it, load gravel there, and how much does that truck weigh, and how many hours of labor did you use to get that over to get to?
Oh, that's gotta be broken out.
Do you use those same amounts that we were given before?
Before?
Okay, the other thing is, we gotta think of is, we know rocks go up.
It probably.
I mean, it's already gone up to public already.
What, you're supposed to be another twenty-five cents a ton?
I would say. I would be, we're close to it.
Yeah, it's a budget nightmare.
It is a budget nightmare. It's an accounting nightmare.
Let's read some of the smaller counties, we'll do.
That's, that's right. We're willing to take the challenge.
Okay, take the plunge.
Like our, uh, frank, gonna be a little bit short this time, too, we'll gotta get everybody to look at my presentation, we'll gotta get them to S I D. Hopefully, start that next week.
So everyone, you talked to the Stiglins County Resolution? Before we change our minds about the resolution like that.
I think this came out over our library.
What's that?
I think it came out over our library, district, so.
It is?
I, I, I don't know if it's.
You pledge your allegiance to God.
We'll go ahead and work on our, from the beginning, we're just gonna start, we got to.
Start a little, I mean, I'm set out with him, y'all, that you could, you could do some of the non-appartment.
Non-appartment, and stuff like that, yeah. I guess what we want to, to, uh, T C report some revenues and stuff like that.
We could look at revenues, and I haven't even looked at them at all yet, kind of, she's pretty good at estimating some of those, but we could, so.
Get those numbers in there, they have no idea what, what sales tax revenue that we're getting now came on the heels of those twelve hundred dollar checks.
Let me go pull that line up, I'll pull the line up today now.
Which may.
We'll see what our sales tax is.
We're hoping they'll do that.
She should have received some already in June, so.
I lose Stacy.
Yeah, it's already changed, from your print, I would say, a hundred and three thousand to, to the June.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
That's printed June things, but.
I told you it would be good.
Yeah, I printed these on Friday. So that, that's your total there, I mean, that's what it's gonna be, she never received anything else then.
Okay, so far?
I'm hoping.
I know, they can't get, they can't get the funding, I bet you.
What it is?
They said they're building two more in Texas right now, right?
Well, yeah, I think.
Have they started those? Have they done that?
It was last, the last time I paid, which, uh, they were funding, I think.
See, you wish representing, well, he came here, he said he was already funded, ready to go, we're gonna start dating this date.
I don't know, it's, it's off, too, please.
I bet he's been there.
I ain't know my father lawsuit deal.
That's what I'm saying. Well, they didn't, my paying taxes back, that didn't, three years. Either way, they, they build or not, they gotta, three years, back taxes. If they lease, if they lease the way.
Checking character to the end.
It's different now.
No, they're marching about two years to start the project, um, when it's made, or we live in the enterprise, so, reinvesting, not like, not over the, give us time.
That's what happened down here.
Yeah.
We went through that already, Paul. Well, we know why they waited, before starting, because of the legislation, they saved it for about fifty thousand.
Six thousand? Right, you know, I said, apparently, they have their, the great, or, not, on course, do that with.
Didn't they, didn't they build a sun station?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, yeah.
They figured out where to order, but not built.
They even got named for it, Chigurh Hill.
Chigurh Hill.
That's a good name.
That's a long, long to get either.
And bring a whiskey to us.
He bought my man, I think.
Chigurh Hill, Chigurh would make a bunch of things, it's all right.
Just shut it down a little bit.
All verified, damn. All verified.
Oh, is it? So you know it's true.
Yeah.
Do we wanna take a break and work on this?
Stacy though, she wants a cup. Stacy's rich, you know it now, that's how.
Yeah, they take a little break, we're coming around.
Sorry, we've been those chairs, and I have to walk back.
It's like one thirty, ten percent to one thirty.
Okay.
Still this counter.
Or it's praying.
Fifteen.
We got that, that's actually, I'm gonna come back and work on this, but.
That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, should we shake a finger, Rupert?
Hey, Kay, can you have those financials, and I'd like to copy that front page, have you already spaced it?
My first.
I mean, they're spaced together, I've got, you have my financial, and financial, so that. Just give me the front page, and, and that yours, and take the front page, make copies for theirs, so.
Sorry. Said it's easy, make sure.
Oh, you don't let it rub me in.
What are you doing?
I can find sound, but it's a little cut. I'm gonna do this, my, my chunder.
All right. I know. Well, I'm coming, he called me, he's coming to see me Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, said to tell you hello.
I was new here, just called.
Company have lunch with him Thursday. He was Atlanta, from Marble Falls. Yeah, he, of course, he likes his outdoor photography and hunting and stuff, I guess, he's too crowded for it, doesn't anymore, so, very, 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 very. He had a guy named Steve Pepper, come by, you know Steve Pepper? Lives over in Knox City?
I don't know.
Well, then, you know, maybe he's been around a while, and very good with, uh, David, what David's name? Was, was representative, was state representative? He would have done that, yeah, county, yes, state, yes, friend of David's, yes. He's got, uh, he has health problems, yeah, he's eighty years old, so. Going to Arizona.
Why don't you try and pack them, and just all numbers? And fun stuff like that?
This, this, the, uh, glamorous part of being a mayor right here.
Bad.
All these numbers, what are you gonna do out there in Arizona?
I'm teaching fifth grade.
Teaching fifth, that's a wonderful grade to teach.
I've never taught before, so I don't be in.
Their minds are hungry at fifth grade.
If they don't even school, we don't even know what school's gonna be like.
Really?
Well, Arizona is like exploding with both fires and hot spots, or like, her own virus hot spots.
Right.
They put a mask, order it pretty much across the state, because it's getting to the point where like.
When will you start, when you get there?
The first week that I'm supposed to be back is July twenty-seven, or something like that.
I think I'll focus on instruction, where everybody's focused on COVID.
Well, we don't even know, like, can't, like, they don't, they don't, they haven't announced, like, when school starts yet, like, they have a schedule that they propose like here, but they don't know if that's gonna change or not, because it's, like, in a matter of two weeks, it's changed dramatically.
So it's gonna change again?
Yeah, so they don't, they haven't even said, they have three of her, like, the state has like three of her plans, and right now, Phoenix falls in like the lowest, where it's all digital, they don't even go to school.
All digital.
Because it's, like, it's, it's getting to the point where, like, you can touch a shopping cart and get.
How are you gonna keep an innocent child attentive on a digital screen? I mean, hard enough in classroom, you say, Johnny's running around, like, your neighbor on the bed.
So we'll, we'll see what happens, mom.
Good luck, you're, you're entering a new realm of instruction and education.
Well, I, I substitute taught, so I know, and my mom's a teacher, my dad's.
What a grace that they teach.
My mom teaches kindergarten, and my dad is like a high school online instructor.
Kindergarten, you're just trying to get them through the lunch, drink lines, and fast food, right?
She's teaching them how to do school, like, what you're doing.
Yeah, how to do school, yeah.
I guess this is what I am, usually gives you with her financials.
You did me a hard job.
She does, like, gives everybody.
Is that passion for housework, too, though?
No, that's a passion, yeah. Do you want to do this?
Uh, sure.
Can you bring them work?
She can, man, get, get a text, or tell her she might wait till we see, she didn't send a text, she can, or she's, so, we urge them to send her, she drives. All right, I'm gonna take my.
Sure, we'll use it on our.
I'm gonna take my break now.
I don't know what everybody's back, we'll urge you.
I hear ya.
They didn't give us enough information about that stuff. I know it says litigation.
We, we researched it, we have no idea.
You have no idea? Things are contemplating. I'm all shattered.
Yeah, you're down before, you're reading of numbers.
Yeah, reading of numbers.
Quit burning the hour, or?
No.
Still burning?
Still burning, like, bad, two hundred thousand acres.
Between Phoenix and Sedonia?
What?
Between Phoenix and Sedonia?
It's between Phoenix and Jason, which is like east of Sedonia.
Okay.
Yeah, it's two hundred, two hundred thousand plus acres, uh, they, it crossed over, like, the major highway there, and so they were able to, like, push it back, they're trying to get this made into an area.
Back where the Ventura Forest, you know, in that area?
It's the Tonto National Forest, um, but there's, thankfully, there's not very many, like, there's not much civilization.
Right, mostly all national parks there.
But, there is, like, small communities, they've evacuated, um, but it's just a lot of, a lot of land.
Two hundred years ago, nobody put them out, they weren't those towns, or those either.
Exactly, and this was caused by lightning strikes.
Of what?
A lightning strike, a lightning strike.
So it's all by the nature, ain't it?
A lightning strike. And but then there's another one that started, now it's hard fire.
It increased from the nineteenth to the twenty-second.
Second, that one would get.
It increased, whether it's fifty, four fifty-seven, two eighty-four, to four sixty-four, five forty-seven.
What are you talking about?
Does that service come out? That's pretty good, change.
What did she pull these twenty?
This is the twenty-second here, but this is here the nineteen.
Well, she gave us the twenty.
I got you, I got you. I've got the twenty-second here.
Well, we're working on my car for a kid, and I'm telling her, wait. My son and his girlfriend pulled in with the, like, yesterday afternoon, and I had no idea they were coming from California.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, well, they had late this morning, they had to get their ass. Yeah, I did, I was in no, I was in no shape to receive gifts, I tell you.
They're going back to California.
They took a road trip, get out of L.A., and they were passing, dude, gonna go see his mother's birthday, it's the end of this week, so, he accompanied me, and I had this table, and left this morning, and they're just waiting for their TV production schedules to start.
Resilient.
I think he's gonna go, like, the seventh of July, to go to New Orleans, start filming.
That's the hospital there.
That's what I told him, I said, why don't they gonna start all over again, and then start in New Orleans?
Right.
Um, and they didn't, L.A. and then.
Dollars. Can't figure out either, you know? That's where you keep your beads, Andy.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, she was about to start working on her rodeo reality show, that was gonna be on the new cast, back before all this started.
That's good.
Uh, me, and, yes, she does documentary work, so, probably won't.
Wonder who's gonna be on?
I don't know.
Dale, Dale.
Probably Dale, Dale?
Yeah.
I'm thinking, so, sorry, we're back in order.
Do you have people out there to hang that turban? Thank you.
I wish, no, that, uh, now we talk about hanging.
Don't talk about it.
Yeah, why are the numbers so different between Friday and Monday? Those days change, but, sure, I need interest.
Sure.
Cheryl, why are the numbers so different from Friday to Monday?
Well, what I gave.
Y'all make entries on Friday.
What I gave you a while ago was names, that this is for June, so, I pulled this Monday, so anything that's been received since Friday, or till Friday was on. Well, what I told you a while ago had been collected, that was through the end of May, so obviously, some was been collected for June, so it's a lot better.
Then that was, uh.
She gave us unreliable numbers.
And I said she pulled that to tell you, and that's what.
These are correct on that day?
Okay, look at these now.
Okay. How was your, uh, for meeting? How was your, uh, for meeting?
It turned, yes, we had a good training, yes, about sixty-four, sixty-five auditors, assistant auditors, and...
Is that down to what, the number was?
Well, I only had it there one other time, and we, we were gonna let a hundred register. And then when all this started going on, I said, we need to keep it down, and then we had a few vendors to us, and let's keep it down to like sixty-five. And it was a good training. I had to do three virtually, TCDS, and Erica did a great job. And as soon as they get to travel, I think she needs to come in the other day, but the retirement system isn't doing very well, even with all this, yes. Um, she and then Teresa West, Tina gave hers, she was very good about the financial side of all this, and what you can turn in, what you can... Well, she sent me her presentation, I'll email that to you also, so you'll have it. And then we did Michelle Arsenal with Evan O'Leary, and then, what's it called now, the one with the COVID, uh, she...
Oh, really?
And the Zoom went great out there, and worked great, Hank made me look like a rock star. He was on top of everything, and Eddie Bellin.
Good.
He just sent me here. Oh, he, I didn't know he'd have sent me here. I really didn't, but he did, he did awesome, he made it, he made it easy, so...
You like Zoom, okay? Are you playing him again or what?
Oh, he is. I do, I do like it, um, you know, of course, we had it and had it up on the big screen so everybody could see. And, and I mean, everybody could hear, it was great, you know, the only thing they couldn't, of course, you think you...
Everybody muted, kind of asked a question?
No, there wasn't muted.
There wasn't?
And so we did have a question, and I would have come down in front of the laptop and, and talked, and she could see who was asking her the question.
And then everybody's placed it, that one, and it was her name?
No, because we were all right there. Yeah, it would have, if they sat in front of camera, it would be up there.
If they were on the computer?
Yeah, so it was just on one, one laptop, but, um, those were the only three that, they couldn't try and only get up to it, so... And we're well.
Guess we put the solar farm back in there?
Yeah.
Hundred thirty-five?
What are you doing?
I was just looking at the, like, I said, we still put the solar farm back in there?
Oh, is that not gonna happen this year?
I didn't... You gonna answer that?
Hey, Josh, when did we decide the BP, um, we still have another year on that, the ninety-three, seven fifty? We looked at it, and...
Should be, this should be last year.
Well, they've been working on this up here a lot.
What's the tax is gonna do on that increase if they don't update what was there? Cause they're doing at least about a million dollars per tower. I don't know if that's gonna be added to the, to it, or is it, is it a loophole in there somewhere? I'll have to look and see.
I think they're gonna let you go, they're looking at the big pay field for every power. I'll have to start on the ground.
Yeah, they're done with that, yeah. They're done with that. I think Friday they had eighteen, then.
You just gotta look at the year-to-date track, a lot of these reimbursements.
Yeah.
Yeah, people change, who they are.
Sort of change, water comes left on, back the way up, they're losing out.
People's business.
Little schedule, come back on this, about twenty percent today.
They were at sixty-nine, sixty-four, same sales tax. We went a little over on miscellaneous tax, about a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars.
That's good.
That's good, but right now, we're six hundred, ten thousand, seventy-eight over, won't be questioned for that.
We like that.
That's what I think, that's what it costs, daddy.
Good one.
They didn't make a number call, but... That's, that's, that's all that, sir.
Yeah, so we've had a lot of, like, Sam, the doctor, and they're collecting, and if they had the money, they collect it, and if they don't...
I think it's ten dollars.
Is it ten?
Yeah. Didn't my transport report go?
Yes, Mitch turned in, I know he, uh, turned in for some transport stuff, and it was a little behind because I think it hadn't been, hadn't gotten any, um, yeah, so...
We could probably, we had to probably have to increase that decision next month.
Well, I don't, I don't know, because I think he collected back for something that hadn't been turned in, so remind me, I wouldn't know. Just because I know that he, he worked it up from under.
For institution, for global. Or is it gonna reimburse me? That's good.
We'll do the reimbursement for out here until the end of the year, right?
That's right, and she, when she gets money in there, then she'll do that ten thousand dollar.
So you wouldn't talk any numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't talk it, buddy.
What do you want to talk about?
Okay.
Okay.
The delinquent taxes, you think it'll be the same, or close, like, we're, we're close on that. It varies every year, so...
Yeah, it has, this looks like the least we've ever had in this, since the last three years.
The reimbursement for the dispatch, that could work.
I mean, like I said, but their, but their reimbursement is the salaries, and maybe to cop here, that's all.
Is it gonna be that one seventy-two? Well, if this is three quarters, forty thousand, no, it's not gonna wait.
No, they, they're not gonna wait.
And of course, that may be a little behind, it would be there too. I think the one seventy-two, we thought we did, they were trading it.
Yes. How do you kinda turn it go over on the supplement?
On the reimbursement?
Yeah, we went over.
How do they get more?
Thirty-five, they're over.
Now, that's what was back to two, the thirty-five, and I guess he only paid out one thousand and sixty-seven so far.
It's up here.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, five.
Looking at it. Three thirty-nine, thirty-nine?
Because, Judge, didn't the county attorney something, would get an extra amount, did it go up?
I don't think so.
I don't think, because she ain't got thirty-eight thousand five hundred in there, I mean, that's what she's gonna see. So I think that she said that...
They're gonna be ready, one of them, one of them called.
Let's leave that blank, cause I, I thought she told me that it had, she had received more money, and I don't know why.
Do we need to send all your invoices around with dispatch?
I don't think they need to.
I did, I guess.
Does this new guy know? Have you talked to him about that?
Is that the guy?
There's not a new guy yet, is there?
I'm saying, there's like...
Ten?
Acton's chief?
He's the one I called, I can't, I can't call him and say, say...
Contact on that.
Oh, the county attorney.
Yeah. I guess we're gonna have to go down on the city crime stuff, dispatch.
I think what we do is have to see what, what they pay, I think there's some stuff where they don't understand, or...
Well, they're paying for the copier, or half the copier, and the half of the salaries, except excluding the holiday dispatch, and take that out, so... And I guess that would be also fifty percent of over the number of things that, that they build out.
Is that, that will dip there, but held in City Hall. You know, like, tax the city property owners, or the expenditure for dispatch that they're going to have with the county.
Then they should pay it.
That's exactly right, they're, they're budgeting for expenditure to the county. But then they're saying that the county is taxing their people also. But the county is taxing them with the understanding that the city is going to pay that.
And they're...
That's what they're budgeting.
I don't know what they've done on their line, but, you have any idea what the city budget allows for dispatch?
Oh, I don't know what they're, what they allow.
But they still allow the same thing for that.
See, it, it's requirement, anything that's required to live, to be, uh, employed there, should be fifty, fifty percent.
Anything their tax part and dispatch in the city, county-wise, is our county-wide dispatch. But the city dispatch is paid by their city taxes to the county.
But by putting a revenue line in here, I'm not putting it up here in the tax part, because this is... To be related to the taxes, and that's what I was trying to explain that day, but...
That fell flat.
I just came up, I don't argue.
Jimmy, let's go argue.
So are they figuring here, sheriff, for seven months, or...
This was through last Friday, is when I pulled this, so this is what's been reimbursed as a, so there's, yeah, so there's still three and a half months left. But I think...
Or, or is that reimbursed?
Yeah, she had billed for June here. It would be after, after the month.
We oughta have it every quarter, you know?
What's that?
Get billed every quarter?
I think, I thought she was billing a month, and I can't swear to that, but I thought she was billing a month, I mean, that would be... Because that way you could get, you could put it there, or she may do a quarterly breaking down, I'm not sure.
Well, according to what we've got, every... Replay. Big girl's on a quarter, but none of her, and then we're part of the...
But I feel, I'm not guessing, the number gets pulled out of the sky, I don't know.
Well, no, I think, I think, yeah, I took, um, the salaries for dispatchers, other than the all-night dispatcher, which came out, and... I took that and the price of the copier, and did fifty percent of it and put it in here. I don't know, and I should, should have done maybe the holiday and another also, I'm sure. And so, see, the overtime, the overtime's in there, they may not get that much overtime, but I think they may be sure the dispatcher does.
That would sway, yeah.
I mean, I, I budget for the best in there, if everybody has their positions, you know?
The city will not own one side, that's a totally different question. On it, so, and the city don't do any of that. So we, we assume all that responsibility.
Same logic.
Is it a front?
I'm looking for it.
I'm looking for, yeah, for my...
How much is their four's budget, more than our jail, dispatch, and sheriff?
Around three D, so...
He, two point four.
Seriously?
Pretty high.
But they pay him more, and they have more.
That's cause they save money on dispatch. Our officers pay more due than they pay to do.
Same thing with the additional discretionary, they're more than what we budgeted for.
Yeah, thirty-five hundred dollars.
What load is that?
Ten, three, three thirty-nine, three sixty-three.
Three sixty-three.
Yeah, and see, that's if she's got, that's her paying back, you know, for part of Phillips, and then she also, if she has the money, she gives them.
Extra.
Yeah, so...
Didn't they use some money out of?
You know that, Sheriff? Second, I think, we went past this little bit, uh...
Pretty good.
Three twenty-nine, knowing what the supplement was gonna be, and allowing for that, and then for it to be higher in actual receipt, what happened?
See, I don't, we didn't know.
Ten percent higher?
We didn't know, and ain't got the money, and she said, I don't want this money.
That's what we discussed.
Yeah, and that's what, so she got it, it was more, now, I don't know, I need to talk to her, I don't know if that was just a one-time...
Did you have a pipe in the last year that was started out? They could clear it up.
There was.
No, did y'all clean them out?
There was.
People do, uh, exactly, I can't remember.
Okay, so it's gonna be this...
So wasn't your budget thirty-eight-five this next year?
Yes, but we didn't know when we did budget that it was happening, and we...
Thirty-eight thousand.
I'll put it down. So that supplement has changed?
Yes.
And going back up to sixty-five, we are still giving ninety-three, seven fifty.
Yes.
Well, that beverage, I thought would do different, what he does, we must have to seal a little up, that beverage.
Maybe more in the last month.
One beer at a time, huh?
Of course, we had, what, two months, and everybody shut down, too?
Yes.
Only barging. See what the governor is thinking about keeping alcohol to go, available?
No.
How does that fit with open container DWI?
Do they sell it for it?
That's, that's a...
If you get stopped, it's up when you get taken?
Sure, we can hardly believe so.
Like, they're gonna...
Probably, no more.
That's kind of crazy.
We're gonna, on criminal justice fees, one hundred, we have to go down to about forty thousand.
Well, I don't, I don't know, just like I said, that's just, um, that's just through May's reports, you still got June, July, August, and September four.
You see, that's the...
But I don't think in March and April, it really stopped on tickets.
That's the other thing on this Senate bill two, on our county attorney, district attorney, and stuff like that, it's a five percent. If we work off five percent, right, on the district, district attorney and stuff like that, on our budgeting.
Fees?
Fees, it's different than what?
On our, on the rest.
Well, when we, when we figure the budget, it's a different number than the three point five.
Oh, well...
Judicial.
Raise the judicial fees?
Well, yeah, here it is. The, the limited to the five percent increase in expenditure that could be counted toward the adjustment on the, uh, criminal and the civil attorney appointments.
That's a great question.
Do you want to?
Who are you, the priest?
The criminal and civil attorney appointments, the limit to five percent increase in expenditures that can be counted toward the adjustment.
We don't do civil appointments. We do criminal appointments, and that's on your energy.
Okay.
Right, but that's on your, like, uh, like, your attorney general stuff and things like that, I don't think any of that.
That's, that's the more adjustments on revenue, on this deal that go by.
All the thing I have down here, criminal.
And also, John, did you read it there about?
Is that having to do with raising fees?
No, it has nothing to do with fees, it has to do with your, your no new revenue on your tax. It's not the fees. It's what we're figuring on the budget.
That's so crazy.
No new fees?
The adjustment to the no new revenue rate. The rate.
No new revenue rate, so those fees are not calculated into the...
Well, they're in a different deal. It's just like our debt service. Our debt service is the same as it was now. But also, too, we can, we can also fix it where we have a, a savings account. For, for three years, you can save the maximum dollar.
That was a lot of stuff to do with, it says, criminal and civil. Or they transfer out surplus, same time I need to get, and it's dependent period, which would include our, I think would include our...
Should be, stuff with the jail.
Anything else?
Yep.
It's gonna be emergency.
Well, even also the budget for a county county. Would that city...
I can't get out of there with an emergency, because it was coming up there.
You didn't have to see.
So we moved down the money market.
The doctors, the lines, well, we could...
And surplus in our...
At my hearing, yep.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Man, that'd be a federal expense.
It is a federal expense.
Auto-impairance, offense, expense.
You know, we, once in the hundred ninety thousand a year, which...
There's so many differences in our... This first year, it's been...
You know, and all the...
It's all contested, and you still got... It's anything before that. Yeah, the unused increment rate, that's where we're gonna come back up to three years worth of...
Bank is put in what?
It's a county, it's up to three years worth of unused increment rate, which can be used to adjust subsequent years voter approval rate of that triggered automatic election.
So you can buy that rate down with that money?
Well, you can bank it up, you know, for...
Banking, when you take it out, one effect is that having is taking that rate down.
Well, uh... It has... In other words, if you, if, if you go up or if you're below the three point five...
Right.
You can put that money back in a little safety.
About two to three point five.
Yes.
And then the next year, if you go to four, you can take money out of that account, drop it back down to three point five. When do you get that money out?
Yeah.
And for what do you get that money out?
Well, it depends on how you figure it on the tax rate and how that works out. That's what we...
So it's back into compliance with the three and a half percent?
Yeah.
You thought it was three years, but you gotta figure it out.
Sounds like it, doesn't it?
You can't, if you don't use it in the three years, you can't.
You gotta put it back?
Yeah. What are you gonna use?
For continuous growth.
Yeah.
We've got some of those camp.
Well, it's just like this. It's say, let's say that the voter approval rate is fifty-one, point five one seven five oh. But the adopted tax rate is point five zero 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 zero. That means you have an unused increment rate of point oh one seven five oh.
Right.
That you can put back to save for the future. And if you were saying that budget happens for three years in a row, you can save it up, or you can go, you, you can use up to about point oh five two five oh.
So if we're a half percent under our previous year this year, we can save that?
We can save that half percent.
We could use that surplus.
Yeah, so you could help opt it out, but I, but I'd have to have a vote.
Or, yeah, they asked to keep the budget.
There's so much in this deal that's gonna take everybody digging and scratching.
I mean, a lot of missteps, say, like you...
Well, there, it's not only this, it's also time to get something, to be done.
None of those guys down there, legislature's smart enough to run this thing? I know them. Collectively, they come up with this stuff.
Oh, tell them. Well, the day that they voted on the bill, the day before they voted on the bill, they had a hundred and thirty-five different what ifs that they had to read them on before the next day they voted.
That's your passion that they're working on.
You know?
That's kind of attitude they took.
Well, they, they're already telling you they haven't got it worked out yet because they don't have the paperwork to figure out what the next year's doing.
Had found in the governor, what the money's going to happen. We have no idea, okay? Glad you figured it out. There you go.
I didn't know that. They didn't want to get me.
And I canceled that Friday, that third year, I wouldn't want to see any garbage.
Oh, yes, I remember that.
Hey, wait. We're going to stop the place. Okay, okay, if you do that, then you'll be up there. You have a candlestick?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. I'll see you next time.
Police department.
Two, one, uh, one, two.
How many hours?
You don't want to...
I don't see the secretary. Three seventy-three, uh... Placements?
Mm-hmm.
You got what?
Here, we might go up on that, but that's pretty close.
Is it seventy-six right now?
Y'all, how many, how many we got placed?
I know they're over, but... Juvenile placements on, on three seventy-three.
I mean, we got, we got any...
Juvenile placements. We got a lot of juveniles right now, so, because it's, it's over right now.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a lot we've got. I still have one, two.
Did you?
I had seen a sign that said it's a boy. Uh, he's probably forty-seven.
Placements. Well, places two in seventeen, it looks like you go a hundred and twenty-four.
I think what I'd do, I'd like to get him to do a presentation so we find out what his pony is for next year. I know he has no idea about this, but he can give us some insight as to what we're asking wants.
We're a thousand over, still got four months.
Yeah.
Wait a few weeks.
Yeah.
One, one, nine, summer out of thousand. Too many. Just for the police department. They have a jail. They have a dispatch. They have a jail, let me find out where they're, how they're paying for that.
Where is the dispatch?
Yeah, oh, well, you know, like, broken house.
He didn't say what it was on dispatch.
He was probably under the police department, but... It's under fire department, the sheriff's in the fire department, one...
I don't know if they put all that together, or I think they should have a separate, or...
I want to see a copy of the budget. See? Is there? Are we behind on getting very, very much in there right now?
That's great, yeah, I mean, that's always worth it.
So we haven't had very many, uh, we have, you know, we did have last year, we got a lot. But this time, because I just filled and I think you had one vapor county, like, nine hundred dollars or something, but... It was?
Two.
Two out of county. So it's a bit less than...
Yeah, I, I've got the dispatch you pulled up out there. That's twenty-six, oh, twenty-six, oh, four, four, three.
Uh... It's twenty-six, oh, four, four, two, and four, three. Two and three.
Yeah, yeah. Capitalization here says the, um... That's just for county indigent defense compensation expenditures. In this section, defense compensation expenditures for a taxpayer being the amount paid by the county to provide appointed counsel for indigent individuals and criminals seven or several proceedings. And according to the scheduled fee, it's adopted under part twenty-six point oh five, go from secret. In the period beginning on July one of the taxpayer proceeding the taxpayer for which the tax is adopted. And ending on June third, June thirtieth of the taxpayer for which the tax is adopted. Less the amount of indigent grants received by the county during that period for the signed purpose. As I read, if the county's indigent defense compensation expenditures exceed the amount of those expenditures for the preceding year. The no new revenue minus obligation right for the county is increased by the letter of rights computed according with the law of the law. Current taxpayers' indigent defense compensation expenditures, less second taxpayers' indigent defense compensation expenditures divided by current total value, less new property value. Or, uh, second taxpayers' indigent defense compensation amount, point oh five percent, divided by current total value, less new property value.
Up to that last part, are you aware of that?
Up to that last.
I gotta figure that out.
But, but, what, what percentage there is, 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 you know, whatever you know is fixed rates. Did you pay your rate? Well, if we get money back for instance, in defense, for twenty-three, twenty-four thousand every day, we have to back that money out.
Yeah.
Any, any tax... So you really can't, you really don't know?
Obviously.
On that, yeah.
Watch over the all-county apartment.
That's a transfer.
Forty-one thousand dollars. Way that line, criminal law money that, I'll ask you, they'll be all, they're, they're, this is criminal and civil law.
So, like, civil, that you're out here.
I'm sorry, but...
Your what? Your what? I'm, I'm... The tobacco money, or?
Yes, the reason, no, the reason it looks like that, uh, we moved money out of tobacco, we had to move that through there. So that's not all we received from the tobacco. I looked at that too, and I thought, right.
Do all, we transferred?
That was that money for, we spent on something out of the jail, like here. Yeah. Something, and it went through there.
I thought that she did know.
She was, you know, you broke out.
I think they're back to the old pushing to...
And as we talked on it, the insurance, you know, how would you do that?
We got this, forty thousand dollars, this is the twelve thousand is interest.
Right, I should have, I should have an authorization sheet on it. I'll ask her what office I'll pay some, and then I'll get the authorization sheets out.
Be great, because I'd love to know, because I wanna do some things, so we can do some things.
Like with what you have, you didn't, you didn't finance anything this year, did you? So everything is at a start.
That's why I was thinking of all the comments for next year.
And then you, since we have, we have the shares, but I need to work some numbers, I think, we've got it over, but... These vehicles, these get out, I'll have payments next year, and we haven't, we haven't, so... It's kind of hard to know. Then we're asking about that tobacco thing with the tax. It's because, remember, we moved money out of that tobacco thing last year, and it had to go through that line to be moved out, so that's why it looks...
Looks like it's distorted.
It looks like it's distorted, yes.
I think we over, over budgeted on our county clerk's, you know, thing.
Yeah, I think we did.
Our what? County clerk. I'm gonna talk to her when she gets back, see what she thinks, but...
Unless you have a guy.
Or a buddy. Unless there's, unless there's a buddy.
Well...
Well, see, we will shut down for a month here.
I know, everything's gonna be...
And so it's probably...
But all those unregistered cars have come, do the devil by them, this one?
No, this is county clerk.
It's county clerk, okay.
County clerk.
So that's still, I mean, people that are getting married and stuff like that.
Russia is just...
Right now.
Yeah, money's for everything.
Because there's no weddings, I don't think, probably.
There's only halfway there.
See, I think we got around sixty-four, forty, around sixty-five hundred on that, back on the...
Sixty-five. So the birth office gentleman collects more money than the tax assessor's office, or makes us more?
I can see some of the tax assessors, like, some of the road branch, uh, just about there.
Oh, two thousand?
See, that, that surcharge, the ten dollar road bridge fee and the car registration, well, car registration highways, three hundred sixty thousand.
What's the number?
It's on page thirty. If you look up, look up there, oh, two, three twenty-one, three hundred is the car registration.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the surcharges is one thirty, that comes out there, that's three hundred ninety thousand.
Oh, wow, our car registration's really good.
And then the turp is one twenty thousand, three hundred twenty thousand, so, and I think the tax agency does call. Okay, so...
I just surprised how much cable it's through her, though.
She runs a lot, but, uh, you know, we've budgeted four hundred thousand in your business, but, but of course, I'm sure it's behind.
Yeah, because it's about, I could probably learn something if I knew.
Well, right now, what it's showing that we received today is like a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. But you, the month we've done the May monthly, if you turn it a monthly, so that's just through money, should be received.
Yeah, I think I'll look at it, I mean, we were staying about the, we were last year, I mean, we're staying about the, or...
Well, last year, we only had two hundred ninety-one thousand. I don't know why we went up to four hundred thousand on that.
Because they increased the number, the rate.
Just care of what?
They'll increase the rate, the amount.
Right, so the fees...
So the fees, what? Not that it make a significant...
We back it down to three hundred, I think it'll be covered in a few.
Yeah, twenty nineteen, two ninety-one, we published it, we got a little optimistic, maybe.
No, it's...
That has...
It's great, yeah.
And because of the fee, I'm, I'm trying to...
That's a kick in the crotch. You're trying to... It's one percent.
But we need to...
We can save the Catholic again.
Well, the thing is, you gotta look at left here. Until, until it puts six hundred in certain, uh, the same condition, we file it.
Yeah.
On that inmate house, it might better.
And then I got it.
They have the twenty?
Cause I only, I only have.
Three, three, zero, four, fifteen.
I think six, I think.
And he said.
Is it forty, um?
So, we only got ninety grand?
Well, for an inmate for years, about sixty thousand dollars for one inmate. And we're not having them sometime, like, I didn't have them for a month, and here comes one, and then have them, then I have two, so.
We ever saw a grand go broke?
Twenty. The buyer, you know, for housing, provided for houses for.
A lot more.
Growing more and checking.
Don't have any inmates before.
I'm adding. Are you tired watching paper? Number two sign?
Well, I was like, calling Steven the same, he's like, stay until eleven thirty, and I was just like.
We'll tell him.
Just tell, tell them that, that.
Did you jump?
Decide the budget.
You know, the property being as insured, makes this depends on handling and the pay you're gonna have, how much you're gonna get, we work, so that.
That's a shot in the dark.
That's a shot in the dark, I, I.
You never said. I said the squirrel.
The squirrel, that costs us a lot of money.
Still keep it at forty-five, I would say.
You do? We've only gotten sixteen-six, but this inmate mostly is, um, in my home, it's a legal name. About one other, cause we didn't have any lights and strikes.
Yeah, as soon as she put like thirty thousand down there, we're gonna have, we're gonna go out.
So, this kind of, you know, it's got, we can, so, I mean, I think thirty thousand, if you look at the history.
That is where we met, that's where it is, so what your budget's.
If you average it, it's about, like, thirty-four.
Yeah, about thirty thousand.
Thirty-five. They're about to build a strong.
We should re-invert the license expenses. We got the November.
Like, they'll be much after November, but that number is in our next budget year.
That is.
And isn't she gonna have to have some minor things?
I thought she said something about, yeah, didn't, ain't that right, Jimmy? She's having her elections open longer or something like that.
I think that's what they have.
So. So, our election is gonna go up.
But that's when you see the Navy schools.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to go up twenty, cause.
No, I think that's probably.
Primaries cost more than the general? Cause this budget, this budget we're looking at is primaries, but you have a general last year, we have a general issue.
And school elections. There was supposed to be one that didn't we get.
I mean, land election.
So, the school elections in Mexico?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll get reimbursement up there from the school and.
So, we'll get some reimbursement, but it's actually reimbursement that is made. City elections. Unless the city tells us, you're, you're gonna have election anyway, you can tell, you know. Not this way. Have to be two separate ballots, or they'll all be in one ballot? So, you're gonna go in there, propose to the general, and get back in line, and vote in the city?
What they do is, I'll be excited about that, okay, so I was.
They have city election.
I didn't make money for golf, but we need to do the thirty thousand, three, three thousand, and then.
Number on it?
Three, three, one, fifteen?
Three, two, three, one.
Three, three.
Three, three, three.
He can go to what?
Three thousand.
Oh, and he just takes the trains and see Bill. Come on, baby, let's go.
And we can think the same badge, I mean, I think with the bars shut down, it's about, it was thirty thousand.
I don't know, it's still sixty, cause people.
You know, but on that, you just don't have that.
If you do three thousand, you're gonna be covered.
I haven't had any, I'm, I just have, so that's, we shall pay.
That's.
Might get a reimbursement, you could go.
I said three thousand, oh, damn.
But as of evidence, sales, we have some, it's about that pair of key. So, you have to talk about doing a sale on that.
They did do that on that sale.
Yeah, well, that, all that money we spent for having that reorganization done and all that crap, we not done anything with it?
It's gone. They got, they picked it up, I don't know what they sold it on.
Can you do it from there, babe?
Yeah. Hey, Jim, what you doing, three twenty?
My son, that was something.
No.
That was some.
Reimbursement, like, transport.
Sometime passed.
I kept it six, only. Cause you don't know if it's.
You don't know it. And I do know that they had to pay out to go get a inmate in. And then for more, I paid out five thousand, fifty-eight hundred dollars. And I said, well, that's quite cheaper than having two, and you had to fly them, or you wouldn't have to fly it to get them. So, it was cheaper than us traveling here, yeah.
Oh. Workers' comp reimbursement?
Yes, sir. And, yes, that's what we were talking about, so I have. It, like, we figure that, um, you know, I figured that all of that, um, space off the severance, no percentage of that, so we had any support.
Did it raise you down?
But we should get, we should get some reimbursement. So, Jimmy left.
Fifty, no?
Now, we ran this rate.
Three thousand.
But, you know, you never know when you're gonna.
What was selling, too?
That's it, I guess, we sell the generals, uh, furniture, whatever, from the T K F. But I guess we didn't have that much to be mad about, so.
Early in the day.
Yeah, we as far as.
Yeah, there's a little bit of, uh, nothing that the judge of jury will, if the judge will eat, okay? You could crack them all and. What marbles and sugar, they always make their foot off them.
Probably, if I didn't have one, you would have the thirty?
Well, thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
On, uh, three, three, nine, three eight, probably, and you just don't know, I mean, this is just off the vehicles that have gotten sixteen-six.
Where he said that?
Thirty-five, yeah.
They don't reimburse the expenses on the elections. Obviously.
Yes.
You know, the housing, because we just, we only have one or two stragglers here and there, we lower that to twenty thousand, because.
Yeah.
This is fine. I didn't know about the sheriff general fees, um, like I said, we still have June, July, August, September, November months. That might be a little bit thirteen nineteen, but.
But we're gonna look at it better. Things are gonna get better. I mean, right now, we get, we got, we took a three-month hit, three-month hit. We're gonna, we're gonna pray God gets better.
You'll leave it that thing?
It's gotta be better.
County tax assessor general fees, probably right on target.
Yeah.
Cause we still have.
Yeah.
Pretty good on target to do this.
Well, and you have to, you have to think about it.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the governor getting what a.
Two.
Farlow, yeah, whatever.
So, I.
I know probably you go, yeah, I bet if you're hiring that, this next year, it's a pretty good registration, you have to.
Well, this is just going capitals. The registration steps and the road.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
What's her?
That's that, then we should get down there.
Kind of like.
We can, we can probably go to the thousands, trying to get the daily C.
They're gonna do a lot more in-house training. Except two hundred, three forty-eight. They're gonna have to, we have to keep those certifications, that's cheaper than sending them somewhere.
Well, she.
It's got a district clerk, general.
They take like more fees on that?
On the training, I think, I guess, cause they're gonna have to have a lot more training. Like, the district clerk. Of course, that's family, had them head before.
We already had that?
Well, not for this year. The training at the L A C. Twelve, I think I've got the twelve hundred, I mean, they're gonna have more training.
This might be fifty.
I'd say two thousand. Come on, Jimmy, let's go to.
Uh, fifteen.
A man from loving, is lost in ever-loving.
But district clerk fees, of course, they, you know.
I would say, I'd say a hundred thousand, and that's a pretty well aligned with every line one year.
And it's what past years.
Okay.
It's really hard to look at this year's, but the budget's next year.
Usually that's about seventy million.
We're about to nail the money market accounts. I'm wondering about three sixty-one hundred, three sixty-one one. Those state things?
You know, accounts doesn't matter, we would.
The state, yeah, I would go up for sure, only at twenty-five, seven.
The now, now we're eighteen.
Well, even at that, we still got three months left interest. You don't hire? I wouldn't want to hire.
The twelve?
The one now?
The twelve.
I'm talking about.
We're sixty-one hundred.
One oh one, the one hundred? You might be good. And the killer of that is interest, is getting it down low, it's right.
Maybe fifteen?
That's right. Just do fifteen, I would.
And the CD's the sound for you?
Well, we're only down to twenty-five, so.
Isn't that what makes me think?
Thirty?
Thirty.
Twenty-five percent decrease.
Interest on the tobacco.
That right in.
And of course, court bound, court bound rentals are now, we can.
It's right in the middle of the seasons. That's not what I said, I'm about the hot tax, well, I don't let it down, but you might could go back, cause next year will have.
As well be getting off of this train, I had everything out there, it was moved for two nights.
It's pretty good, it's good month.
I did something.
Yeah, it's a couple that happened, and all that, where you knew.
They did?
Yes, it did. So, we had fourteen hundred.
Yeah.
Did we have any grants, looking, we're looking at?
Um, what we do, we're, they lose all, uh, election grants, was care funds. And I'm not sure how that plays out, or how much you could.
Totally the hot of fifty-five.
See, the summer is, summer is the wildcat, it's busy when we season.
I bet you be.
Next year, next year, we're at twelve whole lines.
I bet you be.
Fifty thousand? Fifty-five, fifty-five.
Yeah, he would be.
Well, the miscellaneous, you never, you never know.
This is different than what I think it'll do. Fifteen?
Miscellaneous?
Yeah, fifteen thousand.
Miscellaneous, that two?
The two, the two thousand.
Thousand, it has twenty-five, fifty-eight.
We got what you're saying, thirty, thirty-five thousand.
Eleven, three eighty-two hundred. I think we'll.
Sixty-five on the tobacco. Because.
No, well, uh, two miscellaneous grant funds.
Oh, we had.
We've got the twenty-six, and we got.
See, I think those care funds will go into there that we get, and I'm not sure, we just knows more about that, how much we're gonna get, cause there's the three or four different grants, and I don't know.
Totally.
But the deal is, we get the money in, and then she's gonna spend it down here, so it's gonna.
It's gonna be in there to offset, don't it?
How much tobacco money we get this time?
It was around sixty-one hundred dollars.
We keep it at sixty-five.
So, on, uh, on the grant ones, just leave that twenty.
What is it?
If, if you did, if you did, right there.
Yeah, where'd that come from?
If you did, there was.
She didn't like those eighty-sevens, didn't she?
There's another ten thousand out there somewhere.
I think it's cause, remember, Mitch got that money in for those cameras and stuff, and I had to move that down into that line, and so when I did it, I didn't really.
What was? It wasn't sixteen, third, three.
Exactly, that stuff. There's another one there, I believe, that we got the, uh, the.
I know there's the lovers.
The one we got, the, uh, cameras and stuff?
Yes.
From the, the, uh. Jim administration.
We put, we had ten thousand down there last year.
And then there was another one that he got for something else.
Sixteen though.
Forty-five hundred, maybe, something like that.
So, I could pull that line, and we can say what's.
In the detail on the, yeah. So, on two hundred, let's just put ten thousand, cause that's what we had last year, Jim. Last year, that's what we budgeted.
Yeah, and then once I move that money around, it kind of into that.
So, it's like, I think, so we didn't get anything. Unless that, we haven't got it somewhere else. We didn't get put into that line this next year, which we increased it by ten thousand. We got put into that line this next year, which increased it by ten thousand.
See, that's something that one might deal with this year, the twenty-seven paper.
Yeah.
Hundred fifty, sixty thousand. So, what are we doing the revenue here when that's cut down?
Yeah. I'll keep that hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in the holder.
Jennifer.
Stay easy, I'm gonna shoot. They might, they might. I think that might have been a better cure. I bet Jimmy was small, I doubt you.
Really? Do you really, you did? You my man.
I mean, they gonna sit there and rub your legs?
Yeah.
Rub your feet? Just gonna scratch your toenail?
Cause when you get fat, it's hard to put down.
Hard to chew on toenails. Too fat, chew on.
Uh, something we're gonna have to talk about, and I think Travis is gonna bring us up, on bond supervision. I think. We were furnishing a vehicle. And I think, when the city replay, we, we paying something on it or something, because we paid the city ten thousand dollars. On that bond supervisor vehicle. Well, his truck is no longer a blowgun.
Yeah, I'm bad.
So, instead of having two vehicles like he's having, we need to figure out on his humble vehicle. As long as he's a bond supervisor, uncomfortable, we need to figure out something on that, so it's not a hundred percent out county. But we just have one vehicle to keep up. One vehicle to tag, we can buy tires for it, we can buy batteries. Take out all the stuff. One insurance. Just like.
You, yeah.
We got something to be making that too. We're gonna refer to the city.
Is this stickers, stickers, or are they magnets?
They're just stickers.
Like, would you take the stickers off?
I don't think.
I mean, that's.
Try to get down one vehicle.
Yeah.
What do you mean, uh, Tom back in for Stevens County, that vehicle, he does one day a week?
You know, you're not talking that much.
I, I don't have a problem with it.
I think, I think he thinks people keep it up too big. So.
I think it's a smart move. Thought it was always gonna stick.
But if we're gonna pack. It looks like we got that one grant in, uh, yeah, that was, um. We look up, first of safety fund, one thousand, three sixty-five, isn't it?
No, there's four thousand something.
Three thousand, nine, four, eight, one, seven. And we did budget ten thousand last year.
Yeah, so we wanted to add to ten thousand like then. For the grants for.
For, uh.
Cameras? And a D V R?
Yeah.
And something else. And it's, it was a good D check, too. So we need to go to.